I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for nominations for Chair.
I nominate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Kristen as Chair of the CCS Board signify by saying aye.
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 So, congratulations, Madam Chair, and here is the list of other positions that you need to.
All right, do I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Well, I mean, I'll do it.
Does someone want to nominate? Do I have a second? Susan, do you want a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion, any other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, I need a nomination for Clerk. And Susan-
I nominate myself.
Oh, you will do it, okay, I thought, I thought maybe we didn't want, no, so let's, let's nominate her for Clerk.
That's fine, I nominate Susan for Clerk.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and Susan has expressed a willingness to be on the Policy Committee, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, would anyone like to nominate, unless someone else wants to be on the Policy Committee? Would someone like to nominate Susan?
I'll nominate Susan to be on the Policy Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Hold on a second, what are her qualifications?
To be on the Policy Committee?
She ever been on the School Board, engaged in any sort of policymaking decisions?
Susan, can you, could you hear Clyde?
No, I cannot.
So, he wants to know what your qualifications are for being on the Policy Committee, that if you have any School Board policy experience.
I do not, I've been in, involved in administration in several schools in the past twenty years, but I've not directly served on any School Board.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Negotiations Committee, do I have a nomination to allow, we sort of did this at our last meeting, but we need to confirm that we're gonna continue with Adora. So, do I have a nomination to have Adora continue as negotiator?
So nominated.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, we've decided that this is something we can do?
So, we've done this before, when we are in negotiations, and we've been in negotiations for a year, and now somebody steps off the Board. Patrice actually, the last time, her last year, when she stepped down, she stayed on negotiations for, I don't know-
Quite a while.
Quite a few months, because we didn't resolve a contract.
And do we have a mechanism to keep her apprised of our Boards well, in terms of what we're sitting in, in terms of negotiations?
I've gotta take this one, sorry.
So, I'm imagining that we could invite her to come to the executive sessions.
Yes.
And share, and maybe take a little time with you prior to that executive session, you could have your own executive session. Let me think about that, but I think that's a very valid point, and we'll figure that out.
We can get her to come to our meeting, and we can speak to her individually, of course.
Yeah, so I'm going to, to, in terms of mechanics, I want to make sure that something that is practical.
Right. I mean, it is the Board's choice if they want to do that, and we'll say, obviously, you attended the last negotiation session, Clyde attended the very first negotiation session, but, you know, we've had a lot of process between the first meeting and the last meeting. That Adora is, you know, Adora was even on the small committee before we even started negotiations, so she's, if you want, I can check with Adora and see her availability to meet with the Board during the negotiation cycle, so that she hears from you, what you're thinking, and can represent you at the table.
Yeah, I mean, I understand-
And obviously, any of you can still attend the mediation sessions, as you did last time.
Yes.
You know, we're at a place in the process now where there, you know, it's mediators, and it will be, if we don't settle, it'll be a fact finder.
Right, so, I just, I understand the sort of value of her experience, but I would think, as a Board, making sure that we-
Yes, I think that's very valid.
Understand how that would work, and whether that's even, I guess it's been done before, so I guess it is possible. Or if anyone else wanted to do it.
Legally, it's possible, for sure, we have done it, not just here, we've done it in Heinsburg. I mean, when we've been in the situation, that has been how we've resolved it. But it doesn't mean that's the only way you'd need to resolve it.
Are there other questions? So, what's your thinking, Eric?
I just, I just hoping to, kind of hoping for some discussion, if anybody else either thought there's, that was the best way to do it, or anybody just wanted to do it, or thought there's a reason not to do it that way. I don't feel strongly, but I did think it was worth discussing.
Eric, at this point, I think it's a combination of not being a good idea and not making a lot of difference. I mean, you were at the last meeting, and you understand where this thing is. Earlier in the process, I think it would have been a different story, but at this point, I just don't see any reason that's kind of gonna unfold, as it's going to unfold, without a lot of input from us, other than a final vote on whatever comes up as a contract.
And I'd say, I'm glad that you've, that you went to one, and maybe you'll go to the next, you know, I don't know how much time you have, but, you know, I think that'd be great to have someone who has seen part of it to get ready for, that comes around so quickly, the next cycle. I would never want to do it.
All right, yeah, so that makes sense, I just wanted to put that on the table, and make sure that we had a way to connect with her.
Yep, and, yeah, let's make sure we sort of formalize with Adora, yeah, that'd be great, all right. So, do we have a second to keep Adora on as our negotiator? All right, all those in-
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, do I have a nomination for Representative to the Facility Committee?
I'm happy to continue doing that, that's fine.
Do I have a second? Susan, do you-
I second it.
Thank you.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Technology Committee.
Do we have someone on that now?
I didn't know we had a Technology Committee.
You don't have a Technology Committee?
We do, but there hasn't been Board representation since we've been here.
So, maybe on some Boards, they have Board representation, so I would, you have a choice, you can either appoint somebody, and should we, you know, decide after we do the big tech audit review, and how we want to structure all of that, that that's the best structure, then that person would serve, or you can just skip over it for now, and based on the recommendations of the tech audit, plan, roll out.
Okay, what's the pleasure of people, do we want to appoint someone, or wait and see what that report says, and see if that sparks someone's interest?
Quick question, is this Committee to do mostly with sort of the infrastructure, or is it with the curriculum as well?
It's mostly curriculum and integration, and not infrastructure, there's a different group that needs to talk about infrastructure, and hardware, and things like that.
And, any idea of sort of what the time would be?
Honestly, it's gonna depend what happens when we address the recommendations of the tech audit.
And we're expecting that in May?
It's going to the Board in May, it's been, we've discussed it at the Lead Meeting, which is the Principals Group, we discussed it at Board Chairs yesterday. We will be bringing it full presentation to the Board, to the SU Board as a common topic in May. So, the two people who did the tech audit, Sandy Latham and Carol Valet, will be doing the presentation. So, after that, I'm assuming it's gonna be a big retreat topic. We will have some recommendations for, here's what we think would be the best structure for making sure that we move forward in a way that brings everybody along, and that keeps us focused on what the important work is.
So, it might be at the retreat that we know-
Yes.
We expect this is a once a month commitment, this is nighttime, daytime?
Right, and here's, here's the part of the work that is in the school for the administrators and teachers and staff, and here's the part of the work that involves Boards.
Okay.
I just have a question, we, there are, we have a lot of Committees. So, I'm wondering what in particular gets technology on that list, I'm just curious about how that came about.
I think because in some of our schools, Boards are, Board members are on the Technology Committee. And that's, I'm guessing that's how that popped up.
Okay.
Do you have some objection to that?
No, I'm just curious why technology and not Literacy, Math, School Climate.
Well, that's a good question, but I would take it from the other angle, which is why don't we have recommendation on things that are probably more significant than the technology, like math, or science, or, and I think that would be, if we want to find a topic or discussion at future Board meeting.
Would you volunteer to be on such a Committee?
Well, it would depend on what the purpose would be, but first, the Board would have to discuss it, and see if the Board feels there's any point or anything to be gained by having that kind of representation.
What's the work of the Committee, and what would be the input of the Board on that Committee?
All right, so what do people think, do we want to do this, or wait until?
I would recommend that you wait, you haven't had a Board person, I mean, it would be, obviously, it's not, at this point, a Committee that's structured to, I mean, you would go and listen, you know what I mean? If it's, if it's a Committee that includes teachers, and they're talking about technology integration, I'm not sure what the value would be. Obviously, there are some Boards, there are some schools where there is a Board member, and so that must be a different conversation that they're having. I just need to flush that out, and then decide really what is the best time, use of their time, or use of your time, for exactly what Clyde said. What's the purpose of the Committee, and what's the value that a Board member can bring, and what's the input that a Board member can have.
Okay, does that seem-
I think that we should table this or postpone it until we've had the discussion about Board participation on Committees in general. Because given our lack of familiarity with what the purpose would be, you'd really have to ask the question, the same question about all Committees, so it is a little peculiar that this all of a sudden showed up on this list, because we've never really talked about it before, but the point is, not that we haven't talked about membership on the Technology Committee, but that we haven't really talked about membership on Committees at all, other than things like facilities and stuff.
Some of it gets to, like, what's Board work, and what's administrative work, and that's what we need to sort out. Because I will tell you that in all of the other schools, there are no Board members on the Literacy Committee, the Science Committee, but there are Board members on the, what's now called the Continuous Improvement Plan Committee, that's the old Action Plan.
Well-
And it gets to whose work is it?
Just because there's a history of this or that, doesn't mean that this or that is the appropriate condition.
No, I was just saying, whose work is it?
That is exactly the point.
And some of that is the problem.
And in general, my opinion is the ongoing estrangement between Boards and Administration, not to mention other functions, is inappropriate, if you're actually seeking to manage the school properly. However, this is not an agenda, this discussion is not an agenda item for this evening, so I say what I said before, our recommendation, that we wait not only on the technology, but everything, until we've talked about them all, and then we can talk about whether somebody wants to be on.
Any objection to tabling that?
No, it's a good idea.
Okay. Next on my list is PTO Rep.
Do you have one?
Since we have a-
No.
In PTO, right now, half the time conflicts with this meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually the other way around, PTO usually, well, they used to send somebody to a meeting.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna bypass that one. Do I have nominations for three CSSU School Board Representatives?
You do need, by law.
Or else they throw us in jail, apparently. So, does someone want to nominate Eric? Are you willing to continue, okay?
I'll nominate Eric.
Do I have a second?
I second it, what does Eric be nominated for?
For the, one of the Chittenden South Supervisor Union Representatives.
I second.
Yeah, I second that, and then, I can do PTO, we have on, I'll do that, if, I thought they usually met on Thursday, an alternating month, it's on a Thursday morning.
Okay.
So, I can do that.
Great.
I'm usually, I'm usually there anyway.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we vote on these one at a time, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of Eric Beal as one of the Representatives to the CSSU Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
All right, and Susan has expressed willingness to be on the Board, do I have a nomination of Susan as one of the CSSU Board Reps?
I'll nominate Susan.
Do I have a second?
Is there anybody else who wants to serve, I guess would be the question.
I mean, I think there's only three people who are willing to be on the Board, so.
Okay, then I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And I need one more nomination.
You?
Yes.
All right, I nominate you, or you know.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
All right. Moving on. If you need to bow out at any time, Susan, just feel free. Three point oh, adjustments to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
Eight point four, last day of school, current year, students and faculty.
Okay, are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
I have a question, how and when do we take action on the Advisory Motion, or do we, that was passed during town meeting?
What was that?
I don't know if it's in the packet, it was, I think it is, it was with respect to-
It would be in the minutes.
It says here, proposed Advisory Motion made to the School Board to present to the Legislature the Act of the Town, I don't know if that's word exactly right, but it says the Act of the Town to rescind Act sixty and sixty-eight, and replace with a more equitable and affordable funding system.
So, they took a motion at town meeting?
An Advisory Motion.
An Advisory Motion, so it's really the town that should send that to the, or was the motion to advise-
Because the motion was for the School Board to present to the Legislature that the will of the town was to replace Acts sixty and sixty-eight. So, it referenced the School Board as the vehicle for-
I mean, it's just awkward, because if it were the, if it were the School Board making a recommendation to the Legislature, then you would have a conversation about it, you would make sure your, the majority of your Board agrees, and then you'd send the recommendation. So, you're gonna send a letter, basically, that's gonna say, Dear Legislature, at such and such town meeting, the towns, the, yeah, the Town District of Charlotte directed the Town School Board to apprise you of blah, blah, blah. We can do that, I mean, it seems, it seems a little awkward, but-
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's kind of what was required by the, by the motion.
So, if somebody can get us the, the language of the motion, we can draft the letter, and then Kristen can sign it on your behalf. I'll copy all of you on the letter.
Okay.
Okay, is the language of the motion in our packet?
It's in the minutes from the-
It's, it is, and I'm not entirely sure-
That it's right?
It's grammatically correct.
Would you read Eric on that mic?
It says here, proposed Advisory Motion made to the School Board to present to the Legislature the Act of the Town to rescind Act sixty and Act sixty-eight, and replace it with a more equitable and affordable funding system. So, I'm not sure, it feels like it should read-
The will of the town, yeah.
Right, and so, where, where are you reading that, if I can find that, I probably can-
It's right above the ballot question.
It's a report from the Charlotte Town School District Annual Meeting, the second page.
Okay, right here, nine point one point two, okay, got it. So, I'll draft the letter. On behalf of the Board.
All right, any other adjustments to the agenda?
I heard that, I'm gonna prolong that conversation, though, I heard that Advisory Motion differently than what we have here, and I may be mistaken, this is very vanilla, because all this is doing is saying, this is what the town wants and that's-
This is what the twelve people who showed up.
Twenty-one people were at our meeting. What I thought the motion was, was that we do in fact discuss it, and make it clear to the Legislature that this School Board wants Act sixty and Act sixty-eight repealed and replaced with a more equitable funding system, which is different from the other one.
So, you think it should be in a discussion item instead of a letter to the-
We need to add it as a discussion item, see if we want to take that action.
Makes much more sense, really, but that we need to be on a future agenda, so we can put that on the April Agenda.
So, my only comment on that is that if the actual meeting minutes, and I don't have any problem with doing that in the future, that's not, but if the actual meeting minutes say that this is what was the Advisory Motion, then that's the legal binding motion.
Let's go do this letter.
Yeah, okay, that's what I want to make sure, because that's-
I think you have to do this letter, I think it's gonna be received in an interesting way, but I think that Clyde's right.
Well, do we have to, though, because, you know, they make Advisory Motions that we stop using pesticides in school, that was one from last year, and so, or any noxious chemicals. We didn't take action, I mean, we said, in general, we don't, and, but, does an Advisory Motion mean that you have to do what you are advised?
I think, in this case, you know, where we're wording the actual letter as described, that is sort of our, that was the request, and-
I don't think there's anything problematic with it, we'll make sure we write the letter, so it's clear to anyone reading it, that this isn't your action. You were charged with doing something, and you followed through, on their behalf.
And in general, I agree, it's an Advisory Motion, we really don't have to do anything, but in this case, yeah, this is it.
I don't have objections to sending it, and we'll put it on the Agenda for April as a discussion. All right, four point oh, Audience and Communications, Joe? Hi.
Hi. Hi, no, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right, five point oh, Presentations, five point one, six through eight, Academic Program.
Would you like me to shut the lights off, or you have the color PowerPoint in front of you also, but I can also see pieces, I'm not sure, because last time, it seemed like it was difficult to-
Could that help a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it certainly will help for the people who have-
But we have this, I mean, we do have the printouts right here.
Is that better? Yeah, that is better.
Okay, so tonight, I'm going to present the six to eight academic program review. As always, all that we do to support students is aligned with our mission statement, which is to develop citizens who learn actively and collaboratively, think creatively and critically, live responsibly and respectfully, contribute positively to their community, and pursue excellence in their academics and individual interests. This slide may look familiar to you, we've shown it for the past couple of presentations, and as we review the six to eight program, I again, I again want to emphasize the shifts in the ELL Common Core State Standards, and what we want students to be able to do as we move forward. And we want students to be able to closely read complex text, with a greater emphasis on informational text and informative writing. We want them to be able to evaluate and gather evidence, and then integrate all that information into clear, coherent writing, that demonstrates critical thinking skills. So, you will see that these big, I have big ideas throughout the presentation, and future slides, and they're all support the progression of having students to be college and career ready, and the three bullets go across all content areas. We also talked about, in our presentation last time, technology, and the importance of technology with the Common Core shifts, and just, I'm gonna read this quickly, students employ technology thoughtfully to enhance their reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language use. Tailor their searches online to acquire useful information efficiently, integrate what they learn using technology with what they learn offline, be familiar with the strengths and limitations of various technology tools and mediums, and select and use the best technology tools suited to their communication goals. And as Greg emphasized last time, and I'm emphasizing today, we're not learning technology in isolation, it's embedded into the instruction with Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, and, Science and other content areas. So, it's teaching students how to flexibly use technology within their daily lives, and for diverse tasks. And you're gonna see how technology's incorporated in some of the examples of instruction throughout this PowerPoint as well. So, our school and Supervisor Union-wide focus in the ELL over the past few years has been on these two goals right here, which are to help students to read and understand more complex texts, especially informational text. And here's an example of one of the texts right here, in seventh and eighth grade, which is really an adult book, but we, students read a chapter in here that had to do with the Great Depression, because of a project they were working on, so Bill Bryson, the book One Summer. We also want to help students to integrate information into clear, coherent writing that demonstrates critical thinking. And here are some examples of that, tonight, I have here, sixth grade, sorry, am I pointing you? And we have a book, it's a book club that sixth graders are doing, and it's based on historical fiction. This particular book is actually about a Vermont farmer, and a student who's handicapped, and they're actually, you see this piece of paper here, they're actually taking notes, they're close reading or tracks from evidence in the book, and this is a little study guide that they have to help them remember how to take notes about complex text. And so, they're taking their notes here, and then after they read the text, they're in groups, groups of four or five, and then we have teachers, our school librarian, and parent volunteers actually facilitating the conversations. And my observations of seeing the book club in action, and Kristen, I see you looking up, because you may have participated in some of these, the student discourse is amazing. The teachers are really not even facilitating, they're part of it, the students are taking over because of this little guide here that's helping them with their notes about, what, what am I seeing in the book, why is the character acting that way, or, why is, there's this theme, this ongoing theme that I see in the book, and the students are just having these powerful conversations after doing the complex reading, or close reading, as we call it. So, that's helping us with the complex text piece. Here's an integration project with sixth graders, again, they're, the teacher, it's actually a project that came out of Young Writers Program, and they wanted to learn more about George Serat, who's a pointillist painter, and I want to make sure I read the, the painting. They studied the painting a Sunday afternoon on the island of La Grande Jatte, are you familiar with that painting? So, they learned about George Serat, pointillism, and about that particular painting, they did research on that, and then they took a character from the painting, and wrote a narrative story about that. And then in art class, our art teacher, Alice Trekisar, had the students create a picture to go with that particular writing sample in the pointillism technique. Then they had what they called an art op, which is Narrative and Art Celebration, they invited parents in, and students, and they actually got to go around and read their narrative stories, and they actually, if you notice, the student is actually writing notes, she's giving feedback, saying, I'm wondering or noticing about the story that she read, was it descriptive, or something that she liked about it. So, that's an example of how we're trying to integrate information that students are researching and learning about, gathering evidence, or detailed information, and then creating a narrative writing about that, and then, to go further, to integrate it into an art project. Our CCS six to eight Language Arts Program really consists of Language Arts and Social Studies integration to address reading, writing, speaking, and listening in content. We have vocabulary instruction, you may hear some of your students, we have used the Worldly Wise Vocabulary Book in grade six to eight. And we also have focused instruction on the application of English Language Arts skills throughout the content areas. And I'm gonna take you through a student's experience in seventh grade that just took place about two weeks ago, where all of these are being embedded, and it's hard to see here, but on the paper here- And it's hard to see here, but on the paper here, students as a culminating activity in seventh grade, they were studying nineteen thirties, the depression. And they had to do, complete a radio show project. In this, on this particular state, day, students were able to have here samples of an old radio shows from the nineteen thirties. For example, the teacher played a radio show about a western, there was information about a detective story, a comedy, an adventure and then some science fiction. They had been taking notes throughout the process of this unit study. And from those notes, they had to think about creating a radio show. And the radio show had to comprise a commercial, the actual show and then breaking news. And today they were going to be working on their scripts and then creating the recording in the library. And I'll just kind of go through here again, we're embedding the reading, writing, technology, speaking and listening content. Earlier in the unit, here's an example of where students were learning about the Great Depression and this was an example of an actual person who lived during the depression and her encounters or her renditions of what happened during the depression, it also talked about how the government responded or did not respond to the Great Depression and students, as you can see, were taking notes as they were watching this. Part of the study also is to look at support to claims, so while they're taking notes and researching the radio show project, they have to show that they have evidence, so if you look here, this is just an anchor set, which, or chart that helps them remember what makes good evidence. So specific instructions are shown to them, what, is it reliable, is it a reliable source, is there precise language? And is there recent information, the evidence should include facts and information and informed judgments. And the reasons and analysis includes logical conclusions from evidence or ideas. So that's how they helped to create this document here, which is really their notes that they gathered as they were learning about the unit study on the nineteen thirties and depression. This particular piece is the day I went in and actually took the pictures and also the activity that was on the previous slide. Students are using Google Docs, they're taking their notes from here and actually writing the script for this particular portion, the breaking news article. So you see here, they've done some reading and research on the project, they're doing some actual writing or gathering notes here. They're incorporating technology and then I actually have a sample because they just finished this activity, I think, early last week. And if you want to click on that, I'll just give you a few minutes, about ten minutes, but it's actually one of the recording of the commercials. They're showing off the adventures of Sharp and Johnson, back in their show. It's quick, it's safe, it's easy, yes, you heard it, it's Sharp's new invention, the cheese slicer. It's never been easier to slice cheese, it slices soft cheese, it slices hard cheese, it slices all cheeses. It's compact and easy to store, a reliable cheese slicer at an affordable price. Put perfectly sliced piece of cheese every time, slice your cheese with ease by Sharp. I guess you can stop there.
Those darn alphas did it again.
You can stop there, so basically that part went into the actual script or story show that they created and then there's an actual breaking news piece. And I'll just share with you some of the breaking news pieces from the nineteen thirties that they wrote about was the, the Black Storm, it was a really bad, I guess, winter storm during the nineteen thirties that was publicized, the explosion of the Hindenburg and then the kidnapping of the Lindenberg baby. So those were all the things that they had learned about during that time and it's really interesting to see how they incorporated that and in a different form, rather than just this writing an actual piece of paper, they created a radio show project. But it had all those pieces with the reading, writing, technology, speaking and listening and contact and the content of this week, they actually shared and presented those. So these are the history and social science topics that are taught in sixth grade and seventh grade. As you can see for sixth grade, it's really, they're focusing on the American history, starting with the Declaration of Independence and going to the industrialization in modern American, America. At seventh and eighth grade, they're really looking at the turn of the century, starting off with World War One and going all the way to civil rights. And this is an example of some eighth graders when they were studying World War One. This is a timeline that the students created, leading up to and just past World War One, students, they had to research and wrote about the major events that took place during that timeframe and then wrote pieces and then put them all up on the board and had to share and present that from the beginning to the end of that project. This is another example of the integration of language arts with social studies. And it has to do with World War One propaganda posters, I'm not sure if you've been in the school, but in the art room atrium, these are all hanging up right now and they make such a great presence. And it was such a good project, but students in seventh and eighth grade completed this project and the study of World War One. Students spent time focusing on the use of propaganda in different nations during that era. And then in art class, they took their knowledge about this and designed a poster that could have been from those times, students had to determine the audience and the issue they wanted to target and then create striking images and words to illustrate their points. And just, I don't know if you've had a chance to go up there, but I've got a lot of feedback from people who visited saying, these are such beautiful, they look really authentic. And when you actually read what they wrote about that, it's very powerful. So they're going to be up for a few more weeks, if you have a chance, you might want to stop by and look at those. I have one more example I wanted to share with you regarding how we integrate the language arts with other content areas. And this has to do with another sixth grade project. And this is called LEAF. And LEAF stands for lead, which is really our introduction. Evidence is where when students spend time gathering or talking about the evidence on a specific writing piece, the analysis of that evidence and then finisher, which is really the closing. And we've created graphic organizers and this is the graphic organizer that is used in sixth grade. We introduced this organizer during sixth grade and it goes on all the way to high school. And we actually have had feedback from CBU saying that it's great that you're starting students to learn this because they use the same format. So this is the year we start using this. So students, for this particular project, again, sixth grade, they're learning about social studies, they had to choose a bill that's currently in the Vermont legislation and they had to decide to, what, to support the bill or not. They then wrote a letter to our local representative, Mike Yanataska, which to decide, or actually defending their opinions, they had to include evidence and then analysis of that evidence and they had to do a lot of research about the bill in order to do that. And then before they completed their final letter, which is a sample of one, they actually did some peer conferencing. Students had to look at each other's drafts and give each other feedback. Do I have enough evidence, is there enough analysis to port that? And then they finished their final drafts, they took a visit to Montpelier back in January. After their visit, they were able to give their letters to Mike. He promised them that he would respond to each and every one of them. And this Monday, he actually came back and had a response for each and every child. He came in and visited them, he allowed them to read his responses to them and then they talked a little about, he actually thanked them and said that you're, thank you for standing up and being a citizen and taking action regarding these, and I just wanted to share some of the letters they wrote. One child talked about the use of electric, electric vehicles. Another student was very passionate about the skiing, skiing trails and if taxpayers should be paying for the rescue of skiers. And then another child talked about the Agency of National Resources and I wish if we should have permits for hydroelectric systems in Vermont. So these are some complex bills they were looking at and it was just really amazing to see them go online, do the research and then come up with their lead paragraph and then the evidence to support it and if you want, I have samples, but if you wanted to see some of the things that they wrote about, it's just amazing because it's very complex with some of the language they use. It's really nice that Mike followed through and then met with the students too. So these are all examples of how we're incorporating our language arts skills with social studies. And I now want to move to science. This side, slide probably looks familiar to you because we talked about it last time, but just to reiterate, all of our science curriculums are aligned, are currently aligned with the Vermont Science Grade Expectations. There are five domains, which are inquiry, physical science, life science, human body, the universe, earth and the environment. And then our current FOCI for our Science Action Plan this year, it's the last of three years of our Science Action Plan, was to focus on the integration of science notebooks, again, that writing piece. The increased practice and proficiency with inquiry skills and the integration of literacy and mathematics skills. And I think I also mentioned previously that we currently have the CSSU Science Leaders Committee studying the next generation science standards. And we're planning to begin rolling out to staff the new standards in the fall of two thousand fourteen. We will continue to take the science kneecap till two thousand sixteen and by the spring of two thousand seventeen, we're told they're going to have a new NGS assessment. I'll also mention at this point that I know our local assessment data will be presenting to you next month, but our eighth graders, again, scored number one in the state for science scores. Here are some science topics that are taught in sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade, I'm not going to read all of them if you have an opportunity to look at those. But I do want to mention that when we shift to the NGSS, sustainability and environmental education will be a large presence in the NGSS, including engaging students in engineering and technology investigations to support sustainable practices. We currently have a four Rs committee at our school and we actually have two grade levels that are really working closely on this. Sixth grade students do a recyclable investigation. And we also have a second grade teacher who does a lot of work with recyclable investigation and ecosystems. And let me see if there's anything else. So again, those are the topics and again, we try to embed our ELA instructional strategies as well as our Common Core math strategies when we're teaching science. And just wanted to share one example of this for you. This is again, the LEAF graphic organizer, but it's more sophisticated because we're looking at seventh and eighth grade. And students are writing a summary of their, I can't read it completely, of their, or the, a conclusion from a scientific experiment. And again, it has the introduction or your lead, your evidence, analysis and finisher. And then this is a sample of a complete paragraph which composes all those pieces. So again, we're taking the writing piece and the research and thinking piece and then again, you're seeing that with science. And just wanted to share with you a few pictures of our scientists at work.
Can you back that up for a second?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And here's again, some pictures of scientists at work. It's inquiry-based learning supports students working as scientists applying content and skills, including cross-content skills from math, ELA, speaking and listening to investigate a concept. Just to start with here, this is a picture last year of a student at the Science Expo. Each year, all eighth grade students have to complete an independent science investigation. And after they complete that investigation, they actually do a presentation and the school, the entire school visits. And it's one of the highlights of the younger kids who actually say, we can't wait till we get to eighth grade to actually do this project. So it's been a tradition and it's really well attended, if you have an opportunity, some of you, next Friday.
This Friday.
It's this Friday, if you want to come, they do two set, they do sessions in the morning and the afternoon and the students all present their boards and are out presenting to groups of students as well as parents, so please come and see the work that they've done. This is some sixth graders, last year testing some solar planet output. And we actually, that's the IBM actually, workers come in and actually do this particular project with our students. And then this is a project this year where students are writing about scientific observations and they're actually using magnifiers and microscopes to observe their fingerprints, leaves, flower, petals and sand from around the world. And I wish I had tons of other pictures I could show you, but I just wanted to give you a focus on the wonderful things that are happening with our science curriculum for sixth to eighth grade. I'm going to shift now to math, this again should look familiar to you because we used this slide last time. And it's, this supports our math studio work and best practices in mathematics. Basically, teachers are, you know, using strategies to help students utilize these, these actual habits of mind to make sense, to generalize and to justify and making sense, similar to what we do with ELA, students closely read problems. They evaluate and gather evidence and integrate information into clear solutions that demonstrate their math understanding. So we want to make sure students can make sense of the math work. We want to make sure students can generalize, students use their math understanding to predict or make general, general or broad statements about how their ideas apply to their situations, to other situations. And then we also want students to be able to justify and explain why. We want students to be able to back up their solutions using math as the authority, similar to using evidence in their writing or discussions in ELA. So the connection between justifying is similar to what we're doing in ELA and in the other content areas. I want to talk a little bit about our math, our core curriculum program, as you know, last year you approved us purchasing the new Common Core-lined CMP or Connected Mathematics Project. And basically, there's some new components of that, but first I want to focus on the use of the teaching sequences or lesson plans. Teachers are integrating CMP, best practices in mathematics classroom, as well as the Common Core State Standards into their lessons. This particular program has now has embedded technology supports for students and teachers. You may hear your students talking about dashboard and this is an online portal for teachers and students to access all components, our CMP materials at any time for planning, for homework and support, and also to support additional learning. There's actual links to videos, examples and explanations and online interactive tools to work with the actual content, which is a shift from what we've had with the previous CMP program. And they actually, all students have math accounts where they can go in and do additional practice in all the content areas or course objectives and the format is similar to the SBA. And you can see some of the students getting practice with that now. In addition, there's some differentiated assignments that are part of the program. There's leveled questions in the books for application, connections and extensions. And it also provides extra practice for students at all levels of understanding. So this is, these are the additions of purchasing the new program, there's a lot of technology pieces that are helping us support what we previously had. And then I wanted to finish with just looking at the shifts for the math Common Core State Standards. Basically, the Common Core calls for greater focus in mathematics, meaning, and we've talked about this before, a deeper understanding of the major concepts of each grade. And basically, we want to go deeper but not wider, so we're focusing on sixth grade ratios, proportional relationships, early algebraic expressions and equations. At sixth grade, we're trying to try to go deeper into these areas of focus, ratios and proportional relationships again, arithmetic of rational numbers and in eighth grade, linear algebra and linear functions. And again, students are still learning other pieces, building the numerical foundation of these things from fifth to eighth grade. But we want them to engage deeply in more abstract mathematics and applying critical thinking skills. So these are major focuses, however, we are also learning other pieces. And that's pretty much the academic review program for sixth through eighth grade. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You've indicated that the science curriculum was heavily weighted towards sustainability and recycling. Is that mandated by the national standards or is that something that we chose to emphasize?
It's the national standards, so that's a big piece.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I actually have a question, would you like me to, for me to view that at some point in the future, with a PowerPoint?
Yes, yes, and you don't, you don't need a specific login, you can go in as a guest, but yeah, I'll walk you through that after.
I, I did to try to go as a guest, that I needed, I, I texted you something just a moment ago.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll figure out how to get you that for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. She couldn't, she couldn't get access to the PowerPoint, so we'll just make sure to figure that out. Maybe tomorrow. All right, six point oh, reports to the board, six point one, principals report. I don't know if there's, not a lot of breaking news, but I don't know if there's anything you want to highlight or if people have questions or.
Not a lot to highlight, there aren't, again, any changes from really what has been proposed with the budget process around grading class structures for next year. As Audrey and I mentioned in the report, we are keeping an eye on numbers of the next weeks and months, especially the fourth grade number as it's.
Yeah, can you just share a little bit about that, since, actually, in the past few weeks of February, we have two students that came into fourth grade. So our numbers would be, if we're going to stay with two instructional groupings, we'd have twenty-eight in each class. I'm still going to continue to monitor that closely because between now and next year, we could have some people that move out, but I am looking at that closely. We do have pairs that you approved to go in each class with the classroom teachers and we're still going with that model. If things go above fifty-seven, I may come to the board this summer.
And would the pairs have a contract already, would we be bound to keep? I mean, how would that work?
I may wait to hire them until August, till I get a better sense. Because of that.
Given that the budget has been passed.
Given that the budget has been passed, if you were to come to us and suggest that we hire additional personnel, where would you suggest that money comes from?
That's something we'd have to look at. We'd have to look at what our current budget is and finding that money, what's already currently we have in place. Or actually, I would make the recommendation, if we're going to go to a third teacher versus not the paras, we would use the money that we were going to use for the paras. Because we, I think we estimated that to be about $62,000. In lieu of hiring the two paras, I would hire the teacher instead. But I wouldn't keep both. It would be either the teacher, and then we wouldn't have paras. Or if we continue with the 28, stay with the paras and not hire the teacher.
Any questions? All right, 7.0, 7.1 communications, boards corner. And I don't know if I sent, did I send the deadlines to everyone? I feel like I did not. But we talked about last time maybe doing a presentation or doing an article on the 3.4. Now we have 5.6. Another thought that sprang to my mind is based on some of the comments we had at our town meeting was, at some point, it might be good to have just a little primer on our special ed obligations. Because people seem like, it might just be helpful for our community to know, this is what we're required to do by federal law, by state law. For this next one, which is probably either due this Monday or next, and I will find that out, do we want to go ahead with that first, the 3.4 instructional program?
I said I'd write something about that, and I will. If it's this Monday, I probably can't get it out, but I can definitely get it.
Let me find out when that is, and then you're going to run it by Clyde as well. Okay. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay.
This sounds good enough, fine with that. But actually, Kristen, that's a very good idea that you just had the explanation of the special ed obligations, limitations, and lack of latitude.
Okay. Yeah, that's something we can all maybe think about and work on, because, I mean, I couldn't just whip out an article right now and that, I'd need to dig in.
I'm guessing that Megan could help with that.
Okay.
And that might be a points corner for everybody. So I'm just, that's the note I'm making. That makes sense. She's really the authority here.
Okay. All right, 8.0, action matters. 8.1, do I have a motion to adopt regional calendar 2014-15? Do I have a second? Do you want to speak to this, Celine?
Yes. Okay, so this is just the 175-day regional calendar that by statute is approved by the regional superintendents, who are connected to the Essex and Burlington Tech Center. So basically, there isn't anything you can do with that calendar. That's required by the state. We will come back in April with our local calendar, to which we will add six professional development days and five additional student slash parent teacher conferences and in-service days. But just to keep it clean, this is the calendar we start with when we develop the local calendar.
Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
May.
All right. 8.2, affirm code of conduct. Do I have a motion to affirm the code of conduct?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Want me to say a little bit about that?
Yes.
So I think that years ago, Lynn and Patrice used the VSBA, Vermont School Boards Association template, and tweaked it for Charlotte. So it has all the same components, maybe ordered a little bit differently, but this is your personal version of the code of conduct.
And it's been our tradition to affirm it. We have not actually affixed our signatures because it's just a voluntary, it's sort of a guideline. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right. 8.3, personnel approval of leave of absence. Do I have, oh, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to approve? Or do I have a...
It is, you are in the leave of absence.
Do I have a motion to approve a leave of absence?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
You really ought to give the details for a moment, what the thing is.
Yes, but we need to have the motion first.
But you have to have something to discuss under the motion. So just to say, I know, but for the record, for the people who are listening.
Okay, so I name the person?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve a leave of absence request for Edward Bianchi, technology integrationist?
For point two.
For point two of, for point two FTE.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for some discussion.
Okay. And does the administration want to speak to the request?
Sure. This is a request that is identical to the one the board considered and approved last year. It has the support of Audrey and I. It's, it is asking to retain his rights to 20% of his position, making him have, allowing him to retain recall rights to that 1.0 job, so that he can make, stay in the position of 80% tech integration specialist. And as his letter indicates, if that weren't approved by the board, he would exercise his rights to return to a 1.0 teaching position. So Audrey and I, in terms of personnel and assignments, and we are in support of this request.
Are there any questions?
Does this request continue to be legal?
Yes.
And is there... Will his rights to bumping or any other aspect of this be affected by any of the wording that currently under discussion for the contract?
It would, not for this year, not if you approve it. And he's not, actually, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't affect it anyway, because what he's saying is, in his letter, he's saying, if you don't approve this, then he will choose to bump into a full-time teaching position, at which point he's back to a full-time position. So what's under discussion in the current contract negotiations is whether or not somebody with partial FTE can bump into a partial classroom position. That's where the disagreement is.
And is, is the role that he's playing relative to technology, do we anticipate that that's going to continue in its present form, that he's going to, we're going to have a need for that role?
We definitely will have a need for technology integration specialists. How that job description is written, designed, how we structure that, could very well, will likely be informed by the recommendations of the tech audit.
And would that, would any actions pursuant to the recommendations of the tech audit go into effect prior to the expiration of this leave of absence?
Yeah, we will definitely be moving on the recommendations. We'll probably be working on a plan this summer. So there will be some changes, but they, there's nothing that you'd be approving that would get in the way of our implementing a plan. You wouldn't be in any different situation than Heinsberg, Williston, Shelburne, CVU. We'd all be in the same situation. Everybody has tech integration specialists. They all do a little, their job descriptions are all a little different, so that's one of the things we're definitely going to be talking about. What are those pieces that seem to have a greater relationship to integrating technology and student learning? What are those, what are the things in the job description that make it more likely that our kids will be, have a, you know...
Well, as you're aware, I haven't been elected to the board in Heinsberg or Shelburne or Williston, so it's not really germane.
No, I'm just saying, it's not.
But there's a little something that bothers me here, which is, and this has now been going on for...
This is the third year.
Three years.
Could we go into executive session, and maybe there's some of the things that could be clarified?
Well, I can't think of, I mean, I'm happy to go into executive session.
I'm just thinking that we're like, kind of like, right on the tippy point of getting into personnel issues that...
Well, no, because I'm not discussing its qualifications for the job or his performance. But what I am curious about is, this seems to be a permanent arrangement, and we don't really have a permanent approach to the thing.
We might.
It always comes around, comes across feeling as though we're kind of making it up as we go along.
So I feel like we're not making it up, but I don't feel I can speak to that in open session.
You don't feel what?
I don't feel I can speak to that in open session, but I do not feel like we are making it up as we go along. I feel that there is information that might clarify some things.
You have such information that you could reveal or discuss, and then we should go into executive session.
Okay, so I'm looking at the time, and I'm wondering if we could skip over this, finish the agenda, and before we come into executive session for the next executive session, because you will all be in executive session for the negotiations. Just in terms of time management, that would work better.
Okay.
So we'll come back to that.
All right, so we will come back to 8.3.
As an executive session item.
8.4, do I have a motion to approve the 2013-14 last day of school?
Yes, so let me speak to that. Well, go ahead and take a motion and then...
Yep, make the motion.
Move in a second. So it turns out with the last three snow days that we just had, the last student day would be Monday, June 16th. The board has the authority to waive that student day if the board thought that bringing kids back on a Monday might not be the, you know, best thing to do. And if the board did that, that day would then convert to a teacher professional development day. So teachers would still work the same number of days, it's just one of those days would go from being a student day to, and that's at the board's pleasure. That is our recommendation, by the way. I don't imagine we would have half the kids there on a Monday, and in the meantime, we'd hear a lot about what in the world.
And that, but on top of that also, that if we have another missed day of school, so if we have another weather day or bad water, then the idea would be to keep the kids Monday and Tuesday.
We would have to keep them at least one day, because you do not have the authority to waive beyond the one day, just as the calendar stands now, so...
So the motion is to move that, to waive that day.
And what I would do tomorrow, because every single board is acting on this, I will send out an alert now to all parents and students and faculty to let them know, here is what the last day of school is. Because Sandy's getting a lot of calls. People are really wondering because they're planning their summers, so...
And would our graduation then be on Thursday?
It would be Thursday.
Okay. Because we will start getting calls from people soon.
I've already started to get calls.
So pretty much our practice is don't change graduation at CVU or here, or at the K8s. We also say, though, once graduation's happened, even if the K7s come back, the eighth graders will not. But graduation doesn't seem to be one of those events that you want to willy-nilly move around because there was a snow day.
Are there other questions?
I don't, I'm fine with it. It's just a lost day, but just out of curiosity, what sort of professional development do you envision taking place on this day, or perhaps I should ask that of you?
Well, I can tell you, we already have professional development planned for one of those days anyway, and Molly has a whole lot of teachers who are already involved in some professional development, who we were going to be having to pay them for those days. Now we won't. Because that's a day that will be part of their contract.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All right, 9.0, consent agenda. Is there, I need to take anything out of that? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? 10.0, directors' comments? All right, anyone have any director's comments? Well, welcome, Susan. Hopefully, next time you'll be here.
Yes. But this works great. I can hear almost all of it.
Good, okay. Moving on, 11.0, or do you have, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, 11.0, confirm next meeting dates. Our next board meeting is April 9th, 7:00 PM here at CVU, room 162. The CSSU board meeting will proceed at 5:00 o'clock in room 160. Board chairs meeting March 18th at 8:00. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye.